Okay, you're good.
Hello, and thank you for joining us. I'd like to call to order the Penn Tucket Regional School Committee meeting from August 18th, 2020. Roll call vote, Wayne Adams.
Wayne Adams.
Yes.
Joanna Blanchard. Bill Buell.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Marie Salzani. Dick Hodges. Lisa O'Connor.
Here.
Chris Redding.
Here.
And Deana Rata.
Here.
4.6.
Okay, can I need, um, actually, I need to amend that. Can I get a motion to XXWU, we need the minimum of different business meetings from August 4th?
Second.
Roll call vote. Wayne.
Wayne.
Yes.
Joanna. Chris.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Bill.
Bill here.
Emily.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
And Deana. Yes. Did I get it?
Yes.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to XXWU?
So moved, second.
Roll call vote. Wayne.
Yes.
Joanna. Bill.
Bill, can you hear us? We can't hear you, there's something wrong with your, your mic.
All right. Emily.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes, yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Deana.
Yes.
Could I get a motion to XXWU committee meetings from August 4th, 2020?
Move business meeting, August 4th, 2020.
Finance.
Sorry, Finance Subcommittee.
Oh, all right.
So, second.
Roll call vote.
Wayne.
Yes.
Joanna. Bill.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Marie. Dick.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Chris.
Chris.
Deana.
Yes.
All right. Now we have so many updates. The Finance Committee. No updates.
Nothing.
Nothing. Teaching, Learning, Accountability. Emily.
Sorry. We have nothing to report.
Okay. Policy Committee, Marie.
Yes, we met August 6th, um, from 24th, and we met over some COVID policies, and we're meeting again on this Friday, 8/21, from 9 to 11.
Thank you. And then, this is what we made.
We're covered in the business agenda items.
Great, great. Now, we want to spread the news.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, just wanted to go over a few things. One, technology survey went out and was sent out to all parents yesterday about 5:30. If you could please complete that, if you're watching this, if you could please complete it by Monday, that would be fabulous. Actually, you have to unmute.
I know one of them can hear him.
Yeah, we got your mic, we're sorry. So we are not one-to-one, so, and that's what the question says come up. Is everybody, we are not a one-to-one district, we're bring-your-own-device district. So this, we are asking people if they have a device that qualifies for that survey, saying yes, you can bring your own device. So we can identify those people who do not have devices. As we mentioned before, we have a large order that went in a month ago, so that we could get more Chromebooks in. But even more than going, we will not be one-to-one. So we're asking people, please throw out that technology survey. If you were given a Kentucky Chromebook in the spring, you still have that, so please write down the tag number so you can verify it.
We cannot hear you.
As we know, we did have our ability to add in professional development yesterday and today. We've covered a large, I don't know, topics, obviously, protocols, procedures, are a big topic.
You cannot hear Justin. It's reverberating, you cannot hear him.
It's going to happen for a little bit.
What can you do to fix it?
Justice issues that we talked about as well, Title IX, the changes in the law. So that was pretty productive couple of days. Building walkthroughs, so we've done walkthroughs in all of our buildings, just going through everybody's shoes. If you were a teacher, a student, a student, like what does that look like from a day-to-day standpoint? Even if you're in the front office, what does that look like? So we've been gone done with facilities loads, Board of Health individuals, just to make sure we doctorize cross-stratagems. And the plan was updated last week, so if you go into the plan, you'll get the appendices. At the end of the plan, you'll see that there are additional information. I think most people got that information on email, which leads us into, if you are an individual or family and it's selected to be remote only, that survey is due by tomorrow night, so please complete that survey. You need to know who is going to be fully enrolled and what their plans are, so that we can best make the accommodations. That is what I have.
Great, great. What can people do to fix this reverberation? Because I can't vote on anything tonight.
If you will be, it'll be, after public comment, it'll go away.
Well, then, I think in the future, we should have superintendent's news after public comment.
Lisa, can you repeat that?
In future meetings, I want to have the superintendent's news after public comment. If I have to listen to that again, I will not attend.
Okay.
Okay, now we're going to go for public comment?
Bill, you're not on your line. We can see you in your log.
Okay, I'm admitting Liz Wisniewski into public comment. Hi, Liz.
Hear me? Okay, you can hear me? Okay. Hello again, school committee. I'm Liz Wisniewski, a sixth grade teacher at Bagnell and the head of a PAT team charged with evaluating the reopening of Kentucky schools. I would like to clarify an issue that was raised at the last school committee meeting, which is very important as Kentucky moves forward with their hybrid reopening plan. Last week, Dr. B discussed a letter that the PAT sent to the school committee. That letter, in part, addressed our concerns around the lack of teacher input in the development of the hybrid plan. I hope to add some clarity to the concerns expressed in that letter. While teachers were given the hybrid reopening plan, we have not had genuine input into the plan. While there was a level of transparency, there was no real collaboration with the people who will be mainly carrying out the day-to-day details of the hybrid plan. Classroom teachers, special education teachers, specialists, and paraprofessionals. We simply were told what the plan was, period. As far as I know, no classroom teacher specialist or special education teacher was asked if the Kentucky hybrid plan was feasible. As far as I know, no classroom teacher specialist or special education teacher was asked to give input into the details of the plan. Teachers were not even invited to participate in the classroom walkthroughs recently done. While teachers did ask questions at a virtual Q and A with administration, I would not go so far as to say that all questions were addressed or even answered. Rather, the more difficult questions asked were simply read and superficially responded to with no real answers. Thus, because of the lack of collaboration, Kentucky has an unfeasible plan. The plan involves changes to working conditions that are not only objectionable, but frankly, impossible. The expectations that teachers will prepare for and assess all in-class and remote students with what can only be described as inadequate support is untenable. The idea that teachers will be able to march through all the state standards with less instructional time under a wholly different pedagogical approach with Kentucky's characteristic lack of curriculum materials is an exercise in magical thinking. The PAT wants to make it loud and clear that these expectations, while they answer many parent concerns, are simply impractical. We have been presented with the hybrid plan. We have heard of other changes around remote instructions since then and reductions to planning time that have only heightened our concerns. We feel it's important that you understand that we view the current hybrid proposal, yet not necessarily all hybrid proposals, as unworkable on many important fronts. We will continue to reach out to you regarding these concerns, and we ask that you reach out to us so that we can have input into a feasible plan for reopening. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, next up. Next up is Christine. No? I guess. All right, next up is Jamie Dioussis. I hope I didn't swat it at me.
Wait, 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 wait. Here we go. She's muted.
I know, I tried to unmute.
Do you want to unmute her and unmute yourself until she's on you?
Yeah, go. I can't, Jamie, you're unmuted. I'm sorry, I'm muted.
Can you send her a message through Zoom chat?
I saw that there's an arrow.
On the Zoom, Bill?
I'm not, can I go to Zoom and get in?
Wait, no, because we're getting on.
Yeah, we'll be out, we'll be out of Zoom once the public comment is, is done.
Because I can't, how can, I can't participate if I can't comment and I...
Jamie, she can't hear you.
I can hear Bill now.
Yeah, now you can, yeah, I just, Bill, you're in, you're in now, Bill, sorry. We can't see you, but we can hear you. Emily can hear you.
Jamie, could you turn on your video? So we can hear you and see you. Jamie, did you have a comment for public comment? Okay, we need to be watching this through the live stream on YouTube and not through the Zoom. The Zoom's only for public comment.
Yeah, it wouldn't come up, it wasn't live streaming.
Check on Twitter, and he just posted it, so, before the meeting. Okay, well, I guess that's it for public comment.
There's a message in the chat.
Now we're on to agenda item. New business?
So Wayne, you want to try to get into StreamYard, and then we could get out of Zoom, and then we would get rid of all of the... All, we get rid of all the echo. The last email that you sent.
We'll see.
Yeah, that's the best we can do.
Did you want me to try?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, here's your new link. And here it is, StreamYard.
Yeah.
You're entering a broadcast studio, pro tip, up to 10 people can join, here I am. You see me?
No, not yet. Yeah, you got it. All right, Wayne, Wayne, you're good, you're good. So everybody's on Zoom. Uh, let's see, we stopped sharing, yeah. So we have, everybody's here. And I'm sure you can hear the feedback, Bill, you can hear me from the phone, you can hear me regularly.
I hear you on my phone.
Yeah, you can, sorry. All right, no more.
No more, Sam.
Okay, so, could I have any more feedback? Is that better?
I'm with Emily and Lisa.
Oh, I agree. Wonderful. All right, now there's not any Zoom. Now there's not any sound, yeah, I got you. Okay, so just so you know, if you're a school committee and you're not here in the room, you're on mute, Bill. You'll have to just say you have a question, because we can't see you, but we can hear you. But for Emily, Lisa, and Wayne, if you have a question, just raise your hand, I'll unmute you, or you can unmute yourself, and then you can speak. But this should work just fine. You're not showing up as being muted on ours. I might, I just wonder if it's something on yours, if there was like, you had to enable a microphone maybe.
Well...
There you go.
Oh, wait, that doesn't work.
There's a microphone on the bottom left, it's pink if it's mute, and it's white if it's unmuted. I'm going to go back and mute mine now.
Okay, am I on mute?
There you go. Bill, you're on mute, you're good, we can see you.
Thank you.
Hanging up.
Still hearable?
Yep, we got you, you're good.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Everybody's going to hear you.
All right, great. Uh, new business. School committee goals, discuss and approve. Chris, do you want to go over them?
Yep. So Marie and Joanna and I came up with these goals that we passed out at the last meeting. Hopefully, we've had a chance to go through them. We met originally with Justin to kind of go through what the school's teaching plan and his superintendent goals will be, so that we're on the same page. Make sure that we're in alignment, especially given the COVID situation that we're facing for this upcoming school year. Marie and I met after that and kind of came up with the four areas that we felt had to be the most important priorities for our school committee goals. Certainly, school safety is of high priority this year. We also felt that communication out with all stakeholders in the district was very important. We also felt that continuing professional development, this is one from last year that we felt we needed to continue and further focus with taking advantage of professional development opportunities that either MASC or the state offers for a school committee. Kind of learn what we should be doing, how we should be doing things. We did a little bit last year with the superintendent evaluation meeting that we had, but kind of continuing on with some of that. And lastly, to continue with policy that we've been doing, but also with the focus on any COVID-related policies that come up. Joanna, school safety and professional development, I worked on communication, and Marie worked on the policy goals. So hopefully, you've had time to go through them, if there's any questions, comments, edits, anything like that. Wake up.
Emily?
Overall, I thought they looked awesome, I think you guys did a great job. My only question, and I mean, it's such a silly nitpicky thing, but under professional development, when you said in additions, sorry, so this is like the, well, the second sentence. In addition, school committee members will engage in at least one professional development parenthetical training opportunity of its own? Or of their, like, I was thinking it should say their own, meaning like, the members?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much for doing this, they, they look great, and I appreciate it. Everyone have any other thing to, anything else to add? Could I get a motion to accept the 2020-2021 Penn Tucket Regional School Committee goals?
Second.
Roll call vote. Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And me, yeah. Great, so those are effective. Next up, we have school committee evaluation.
So we, I think I now have everybody informed, whether you sent them to me or gave them to Marion, and I have them now. So I will compile all of that information and get it to you for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did everyone, everyone got them in?
Yes, great, thanks, everyone, that's fabulous.
Yeah. Okay, now, the next item on the agenda is school committee communications subcommittee. That is part of our goals, and we need to make up a subcommittee. Is there anyone that would like to step forward and on that committee?
So Deana.
Yes.
So, so this is the one that I kind of investigated and kind of looked at, a whole bunch of different committees across the area, and what they do, what they do different. So it would be something that I'd be very interested in, and like I said, I did a lot of the research to kind of figure out what we could do better.
Okay, great. So Chris, would anyone else like to be on the communications subcommittee?
I will.
Marie, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Okay, so on our website, it's, do we still have a communications subcommittee?
We do.
It's still there, you and I are on it.
I know. Okay, remember, we resolved, we dissolved it.
I just couldn't remember what happened.
We inactiv, we inactivated it, and now we're reactivating it with different members.
Marion, can you remind me, do you know where the subcommittee is on? Right now?
I would have to go back to my desk and look. I can, I can email it to you.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, you're on the teaching, learning, accountability with us.
I'll email it to Joanna, I'll double check.
You know, I could try to do it.
I mean, I could do it too.
Yeah, but then you just have to do West Newbury Robson on it.
Oh, that's true.
Probably a little bit of a service. Um, I'll help out.
Thank you.
So we have Chris and Joanna.
Chris, Joanna, and Marie.
Oh, and Marie, I'm sorry, okay.
Now, do we have to make a motion to approve it?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the communications subcommittee with Chris Redding as the chair, and Marie Salzani and Joanna Blanchard?
So moved.
So moved.
Anyone have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna? Bill?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. And now we have return to school update. Dr. B.
Thank you very much again, Madam Chair. Just first, this is a follow-up, obviously, we've not had a tremendous amount of time since our last Thursday meeting. But there is, I know, we found out information shortly thereafter. So I just wanted to go over again some of these numbers. Let me go ahead and make this change this up. So just, just some of this information about what do these numbers mean? And for those of you who are watching this, if you did not see the Thursday's meeting, we'll try to upload it onto my YouTube channel. Right now, it resides on the Kentucky Regional School District website. If you go to school committee, and then you go to videos, you can select that, I believe it's August, August, no, it's August 13th. The August 13th meeting, and you can watch that video in its entirety. But this is just a follow-up to this, and again, I'm going to go over these because the numbers seem kind of weird. And you'll see, there's, there's a whole bunch of information here that I wanted to share. So this again came out last week, we got this at the start of last week, and there's, now they're using, so it's Johns Hopkins University, they use the 5% model to figure out when it's appropriate to do certain events and functions. And you, we know about in the state of Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we have different phases where we are and rolling things back. And it's not just, it's not just purely based on the numbers, it's also, what are demographics being impacted? But here you can see, we're, if we're in red, if our community is in red, that means we have eight daily cases is the average. Eight or more daily cases a day is what we have, and that's positive cases of COVID. And per 100,000, and we know we don't have 100,000, so we'll get to that in a little bit. And if that's the case, if that's what, where we are, then DESI expects that we will be fully remote. So that's, that is the expectation for how we're going to, if we're in red. If we ring yellow, which is four to eight cases, again, that's daily, average positive daily cases a day, four to eight, the expectation is that we're going to be in hybrid or remote. And you can only, you only go to remote if there's extenuating circumstances, and we'll get to the next one, because the next two colors, green and unshaded, that's less than five. So if you have less than five, and green is less than, less than four per 100,000, but again, that's daily. And that is, DESI's expectation is we're going to be full-time in person, or we're going to be hybrid. And that hybrid is for us, the extenuating circumstance, I mentioned it before, is we have restrictions on transportation, we have restrictions on space, and we have restrictions on staff. So those three obstacles are not feasible for us to overcome in order to do a full-time, in-person hybrid. It also was a three-foot space between, which I don't think any of us felt was, for being in a class all day long, was the wise approach. So what does this mean for our towns? We're, we are in a, we're not in a municipal town, we are a regional district. I just wanted to share this with you, this was the last sentence of an email we got when this came out. Regional schools and others that draw from multiple cities and towns, DESI will issue additional guidance that points to the appropriate data to view for your context. We have not ever seen them give additional guidance. So I can't come up with a magical number, but let me give you some examples, because I think that's a good way to go with this. So first, this is a website, if you go on, this is updated, this is new, it's on Mass's website. You can see that all the data is as of 8/14, this is based off the weekly report. So what you can do is you can move around, and on the other one, you couldn't really see, but I can zoom in now.
I'm not seeing anything, it just says example.
I'm sorry, you're right. Thank you for speaking up, let me, I gotta, so I get to bounce in between screens here, so just give me one second. There you go. You good now, Lisa, can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, so this, you're used to seeing this map with all the color codes. And again, there's, there's, there's the red, there's the green, and there's the yellow. Here's where we are, there you can see, Merrimack, West Newbury, and Grovet. We are unshaded. So based on this, we are supposed to be going full in-person. But again, because of the extenuating circumstances of the transportation, the space, the staff, we are, we're up 50%. And these green colors mean the same thing, it's just greens are individual municipalities where they have the numbers. It's just greens are individual municipalities where they have the numbers. The white, the unshaded is smaller, smaller towns. But this map gets updated weekly, based, and it's based on the last 14 days of, the last week's data, but it spans a total of 14 days. And you can see on the key up at the top here, average daily case rate per 100,000. And there's where it is, so four cases, and so that would mean, and a place that has green has less than four times 14, right? So it's less than 56 cases is what they have. So they're, they're, oh, great. Anybody have any questions on this? Again, this is just one resource. So the next question is, okay, well, where do we get this data from? And here it is. I'm sorry, yep, I gotta share it with everybody, sorry.
Justin, this is updated daily, or?
Updated every week, and I'll show, I'll show you where it, I'll show you where it comes from. Let me get you a new screen.
So if it's updated, say, every Monday?
Yeah, I think it's.
If something happens on a Thursday, and it's not updated till the following Monday, is somebody going to notify you from the state that we're now like green or yellow?
So, good question. The answer, I think I shared the same thing with you, I'm sorry. Let me try the different one. Yeah, if, if the local boards of health will reach out, and when the local boards of, when the local boards reach out, they've said that we will be the first group they go to. If there is any situation that's going on that we need to know about that's going to impact our kids, they'll let us know. But this, this data is, I think it's weekly, you know, it was the 12th, which we put it on last Monday, but it was updated on the 14th, which was Thursday. And these are the reports, sorry, these are the reports that come out. And if you want to look it up, it's the Weekly COVID-19 Public Health Report. And again, this, they're now, the state's now using the Johns Hopkins model to help track all this data. But as you go down, you can see it has every single town listed. And on the top, you have the total cases, the last 14 days, the average daily rate. Remember, again, that's, that's the number that gets used to determine what the color is. And there's, so the total tests, the total tests for the last 14 days, the positive test the last 14 days, the percent, the change in positivity. So if we look at this, and you can, you know, you can go down and you can scan this, and let's say we go to Grohlens. You go down to Grohlens, you can see Grohlens has had 42 total cases. Right now, it's last 14 days, less than five, less than, we're less than five, we're unshaded. And it says higher relative case. And the reason why Grohlens is higher is because they were at zero for quite some time. If you go to Merrimack, it's the same. If you go to West Newbury, it's lower, because West Newbury is down to two. Grohlens is at one, Merrimack is at one, and West Newbury is at two. So we are all unshaded for that. This is for this reason, and that's where we are pulling this data from. So you might ask the question, okay, well, what's it going to take for us to get into yellow? Again, the previous slide, we don't know that exactly, but we know Georgetown right here. Georgetown's at 7.2 to be in yellow. And yellow, again, would be hybrid unless there's extenuating circumstances. That might be an increase for whatever reason. And you would go from yellow, you would go from hybrid to fully remote. But Georgetown has about 8,700 people in it. Our three towns, about 20, 12, 20,000, give or, give or take, so two and a half times. So they have nine cases on average, so two and a half times that, we're working about 22, 23 to get us into yellow. And that, so, and that could be lower, because, you know, it might be only at a seven or a six for us. But we are not anywhere close to those numbers. And again, I think if you go, go back to that map, the town by town map, that does a really good job showing where things are. So in addition to that, I wanted to share with you, I wanted to share with you a couple, just some video clips. I think you should be able to see this, you should be able to hear it as well. But we're going to start off first with just, you know, we, again, we need good medical information, we need good science. So this is Johns Hopkins is world-renowned, Mass General Hospital, world-renowned, the American Academy of Pediatrics. These, this is, we are educators. These are the people we're going to for the medical information. So when we, when we look at the Harvard Public Health, so here's, there's some small, short clips. And Lisa or Emily, if you can't hear this when it starts playing, let me know. I'm going to go ahead and play this right now.
And what I want you to focus on is new cases per 100,000 per day. Per 100,000 just kind of standardizes it across the population, so we can talk about different counties with different populations. And then the second is percent positive in the state, ideally locally, but a local percent positive is part. Here's the way to think about percent positive. Percent positive is a way of saying, like, how many cases are you missing? Once you start getting percent positives of seven, eight, nine percent of your tests are coming back positive, you're missing a lot of cases. And so whatever your case number is, is too low, and it's actually probably much higher than that. And so California set up the thing of seven cases per 100,000 per day, or three per 100,000 per day and a percent positive greater than eight. There are lots of other numbers you can look at, death and hospitalizations. I would largely say, unless you really want to get into the details of the modeling, focus on new cases per day and percent of your tests that are positive. And that'll give you a pretty good feel.
And there's a couple other of these I wanted to share with you. So this is about the whole complexity of it all.
We've taken these conversations and made them sort of this very simplistic, like, do you want to get kids back to school or not? Or let's get them back, because kids don't transmit as much. And I have tried, at least as best as I can, to say, like, this is a very complex ecosystem here. And we do have adults, and we do care about them. And we care about them as people, we cared about them like they're fun, like, if teachers start getting sick, first, that's awful unto itself, second, the school's going to get shut down. Like, they're just, we can't have these very narrowly defined conversations, like, do kids transmit or not? It is much more complicated. There are these big spill-on effects on the parents. Parents feel anxious about sending kids back to school. It's true that kids generally don't get as sick, but some kids do get sick. And so, like, we can't also just totally blow that off. So my take in general has been, we have to have these open conversations. We have to understand the costs of keeping kids at home as well. And then we have to put our best effort forward and give it a shot in places where it's reasonable to try.
And here's one on how do you, what should you prioritize in school?
The kind of the right, the standard answer of public health folks is that we have to do all of these things. Masks really matter, and distancing really matters, and kind of disinfecting and social, you know, and deep cleaning of schools really matters. Ventilation matters. I'll tell you what I think is most important. I think there's been a little bit of a distraction around all the, like, deep cleaning and disinfecting. I am unconvinced that fomite surfaces are a major source of infection. So I'm also not completely convinced that six feet is so critical in schools all the time. I'm not suggesting we all gather together in a tight assembly hall. Like, we've got to maintain some amount of social distance. But since nobody can do everything all day, if I had priorities, I would put priorities on ventilation of the building. So if you can keep windows open, critical. Any amount of fresh airflow, you got to keep airflow up. If you can upgrade your ventilation system, you can, there are portable ventilation things that are not great, but they can be added, little added help. Though, that I would prioritize massively. And second is I would prioritize wearing masks massively. If you can get kids to wear masks all day, look, if they need breaks every couple hours, kids go outside, you can take off their mask, I'm fine with that. Whatever you need to do, none of this is easy. But masks and ventilation are the two things I would prioritize most. Spacing I prioritize some, and cleaning stuff, like, I'm not saying don't wash your hands, like, get kids to wash their hands, but like, that to me is not the make or break of what's going to come.
And I'll just speak to that real quick. You know, those are things that we obviously have in the lands. When we walk through the buildings, I know our, our facilities, they're putting screens up, so we have windows that are open right now. We've said before, and the middle school in particular, whenever they did remodeling, they did not put screens in the windows here. So they're going to go ahead and make sure that all the screening is set up, windows are going to be bound pro pieces, so the teachers have access. That way, I mean, they can open the windows anyway, but that would prevent any bees or anything like that coming in. And then the importance of the education is just the last short clip here.
I would really love for us to walk away from this realizing and underscoring the importance, importance and urgency of education, that it's not this side thing, a nice to have, but it's actually critical, it's in a critical industry for our society, for moral reasons, emotional reasons, social reasons, economic reasons. You know, that's not one thing I'm hoping we'll walk away with.
It has been really striking to me that we have spent the last few months debating whether to open bars, whether to open restaurants. And it's like, to me, this is not a close call from a priority point of view. Schools trump pretty much everything else, and yet we have given it so little attention until now. And what, one of the things I hope we do walk away is recognizing that intricate link between public health and education, how education really drives public health, how public health helps drive education, that the, the two communities that we live in, that you and I live in, Bridget, that we, that, that our missions are actually incredibly aligned, right? And if you, if the educational mission fails, it's incredibly harmful to public health. And if the public health mission fail, it's incredibly harmful to education.
So again, I thought those were some good clips to show, only because it shows the complexity. Again, I think you pointed out something you all know, what we say before. And that is, you know, we go through, and we have all the time, we're telling you, we just got this information, we just got this information, and then there you go, sitting right there. And we talked about the two towns in pocket, the two of us. He's talking about the educators and the departments of public health having to work together and to make sure what, what's done makes sense, and it's the best interest and the best health of the employees, the students, and the community. So that's kind of the important part then. This is not a full interview, but this is, I think, another really important, this is going to be about seven minutes, we're going to watch here. And I think this is, this is Dr. Fauci, right? We all listen to Dr. Fauci, we all feel like he gives good sensible information. So I just wanted to go ahead and share this part with you as well. This comes to us because this gentleman here, political comfort, they had him on a live interview, he does a podcast, and so they, they're all together, so here we go. Right now, talking about.
And definitely want to make sure you don't say something that people scratch their heads and say, that doesn't make any sense. So if you're going on a hike in the woods, and there's nobody around for a thousand yards, you don't really need to wear a mask. What you want to do is that have it with you, so that if you happen to be put into a situation where there is an inability to physically separate, you can immediately go, okay, do that. But the idea, I mean, like, last evening, I was jogging in my neighborhood, and I could see, I live in a tree-straw neighborhood in Washington, I could see like a couple hundred yards ahead of me. Nobody was there. You know, I had my mask like this, and I was running along. And then as soon as you start to pass people where you can't stay a good distance, just, you know, do that, period. I think when we start to ask for unreasonable things, that people start scratching their head and say, that doesn't make any sense. So masks clearly indoors. I mean, there's almost an instinctual reaction to say, oh, I'm inside with a group of people I know, so I can take my mask off. See, what you're forgetting is indoors clearly, particularly if you can't physically separate, is much worse than outdoors.
Yeah, and I think we all go through that calculation in our heads, even when we're with people we quote-unquote know. Then you think, oh, but wait, that person had this person over last week, and who knows where that person? I mean, the safest thing is obviously to wear a mask. So another thing that's really been, I think is on everybody's mind, collective thoughts, we're talking about school, and we're all getting different plans as parents, and we're all contemplating different things and debating them, and in some cases arguing with each other about them. And I want to ask you about the back-to-school plan. I happen to have a 10-year-old, so we're talking about fifth grade, and I have a wife who is a college professor, and I'm in the Boston area, and they're both going back to school. And, you know, I'm, I'm a little terrified of this. So the school plan on the college level, I'll just tell you, this is Northeastern University, is there are multiple tests that students are going to be doing when they come back to campus. My wife will be taking multiple tests. They have a plan in place, they say, if someone is positive, to quarantine them immediately. That said, the idea of thousands of college-age kids coming into our city and joining up is scary. So tell me your, your views on, first, the college level.
Yeah, so it really depends, first of all, I think it's important for people to understand, colleges is different than elementary school, because you have people coming in from all different parts of the country. In general, when you're talking about schools, and I'll get to college in a second, Jeff, is that it depends on the location that you're talking about at the state, city, and county level. You know, the CDC comes out with a designation of green, yellow, red. Green, a certain test positive, certain number of cases per 100,000. Yellow, same thing, is it 5 to 10% positive, and 10 to 100 cases per 100,000. And red, greater than 100. If you're in a green zone in general, there's much, much less impunity, or a good degree of impunity vis-à-vis risk of getting infected. But you should have in place how you address when you get an infection. If you're in a red zone, then you really have to think twice whether it's prudent to bring the children back to school. If you're in a yellow one, where there's levels of infection, you should have a plan. And the plan should be, can you safeguard the health, the safety, and the welfare of the children and the teachers? What do you do when a child gets infected? Do you have mask-wearing? Do you have the degree of physical separation? How long can you do outdoor classes? And what classes can you do outdoors? Can you keep children segregated when they're outside playing? Because groups together are the things that do it, particularly indoor. So always remember, outdoor, always better than indoor. Masks are very helpful, depends on where you live. The thing that's more complicated is at the university level, because you can't say, well, I'm in a, a green zone, and the children all live within the zone at the school. So you're not having people coming in from all over. That's the reason why colleges have very, very different plans. Many of them test everybody before they even can come in. And then once you know that the core baseline is negative, then you could do intermittent screening in the sense of doing screening to see if you might miss some below-the-radar screen types of infection. Because you want to get those, identify them, and separate them. So again, I'm not exactly sure what the details of Northeastern is going to be, but different colleges have different protocols to allow many of the classes, not all, because remember, you may want to have a hybrid, you may want to do some online. What about teachers who are in the risk group? Do they want to be face-to-face in a classroom? They may want to do it online. So again, there's a lot of variability depending upon where you are.
Our, our fifth grader, you know, they're supposed to wear masks every day inside all the time. They have mask breaks outside. This is according to the plan, which every plan always says, this plan could change. And then also, they are only going for a half-day, and physically, they can choose to, and they will have instruction in the afternoon online. And then there's also an option, you can do total remote learning. But, you know, for many parents who went through that in the spring, and let's not forget the, the financial impact and the fact that many parents have to work, it's almost unbearable to consider how we, how we parent at home and work, you know?
Yep, that is true, and that is the reason why, say, as a default position, as a default position, the thing you should try to do the best, as you possibly can, is to get the children back to school. And then there's that big however or but. It depends on the things that I just said. Where do you live? What zone? What can you do? I mean, obviously, it's a great strain, not only on the individual parents in the family, but on the economy in general, if you start disrupting it by not having people go to work, because they have to stay home and watch their children. That's the problem.
Yeah. Dr. Fa. Yeah, Dr. Fa-
So I just, I wanted to show that clip as well. Uh, and I think it just feeds it nicely to, I have to pull up another, uh, go ahead and pull up another screen here. But he, you you heard Dr. Fauci mention this. This is what the CDC uses, this is what Massachusetts is using now, this is what we have now as a basis and what's going on in our community. And I just went over that in the previous map, so we know what's going on. Is that, could that change? Yes. Could our decision change based on numbers? Yes. Or right now, even Dr. Fauci is talking about green. If you're in red, that's where the concern comes in about it. And I don't think anyone in this room, if we went red, would be prepared if I said, look, this is not going to work. Uh, but now, again, I just wanted to show the breadth of science and medicine to people that are in those fields, because again, we're, here's, that's where we're going to get our cues from. Uh, so here's where we are now. Roland with one case, Western with two cases, there's previously four, and Merrimack stayed the same, they're at that one case. And these are the things that Dr. Fauci just mentioned as well. And again, that parent is, runs that podcast, he's conquered, um, so it's it's wholesome. It's nice to have that feedback about our general area. And what you heard from that parent there is no different when you hear a parent from any other town, say, hey, we have these plans, these are the options that people have, some people aren't aren't happy with all of them because of the spring experience. We understand that. And we're going to continue to do them the best we possibly can. But these are the considerations, like those positive tests, i- if they start increasing, why are they increasing? Where are they increasing? Is it at school age children? Is it at, is it in senior citizen housings? Are they people who are connected to the school? Um, so it's it's all of those factors that we're going to constantly going to be looking at. And uh, I think Lisa, you had asked that question about, okay, well, if it, if it's in between, if it's a Monday, Monday and it's a Thursday and there's all of a sudden like six tests come back positive, one, the board of health, if it's impacted, someone from there hopefully will contact us. Remember, this is if if it's a student or a parent, they, the parent has to notify us or they have to notify the board of health, or the board of health will find out eventually, and then they let us know. Uh, but there again, I'm sorry, I didn't even realize this. But you can see in additional considerations, that bottom slide again, um, there are going to be additional guidance coming for our data points. But I just wanted to share that. I know we covered a lot of information last Thursday. Uh, but I thought those clips were really important for um everyone to see. Okay, that's that's what I have for our return to school update.
Thank you, Dr. B. Is there any questions or comments? Lisa?
I have a question. So I understand that we're going to make masks mandatory, but what do we do in regards to ventilation? And when it comes to keeping windows open, it's going to be really cold come the winter month, so what's that going to look like?
Yep, so we'll start with the windows first. Windows, they they have to be open if it's, I think even some of the things I've watched from the CDC, if it's 40 degrees in the sun, it's going to be, going to have to dress appropriately. Like those windows have got to be open for ventilation, and that doesn't matter where you, doesn't matter what your school is. Um, the other part of that has to do with like the ventilation in the classroom. So um all all throughout the summer and every year, our custodians go through and they pull all the split systems or the old systems that are in, where their space going right now, way back by dick, uh, there's a system that pumps in air. Uh, so all those filters, they get cleaned, there's air exchange handlers, uh, they're in the ceilings. Um, so all of those, and then all the filters get changed. We have the filters beyond uh what the CDC recommends. I forget what happened, it is, I didn't, no one here knows. Whatever the number is, I know we go, we we're, we're above that in our, in our systems.
Did I hear you mention the word screens?
Screens, yes, like the middle school. So it'd be a minimum of two windows that'll be up. Right now, we're going to start off with two windows, make sure we get all those, if we can add more windows into the middle school in particular, where screens do not exist right here, we're looking at that. Um, so we'll make sure there's at least two windows in every single classroom. And in those of you who did walkthroughs on those stifling days and we opened up the windows, it is a big burst of air that comes through those windows, so it's uh super helpful.
Bill, you got a question?
Yeah, it's really for Justin. One of the things that's been popping up is the use of ultraviolet lights to disinfect classrooms. Have you had any information on that sent to you?
Uh, so Bill, I I get uh probably about 120 something pieces of information. I have seen, I've read through a couple of the early research on the ultraviolet lights, uh, putting those into, they're actually not even just put them, they actually have them where you can put them into uh air systems, HVAC systems. Uh, we don't have some of the systems, so obviously in our buildings, uh, we don't have any HVAC, the new building of Forest Wood. Uh, but yeah, we we've looked into them, we we've not purchased any of those right now. But we're using, I think what um Dr. Ja had had mentioned is, you know, making sure that the deep cleaning that we're going through and and in those classrooms, uh, we are using those fog machines. Uh, and we, force of nature is what we use because it's a natural, non-toxic, it doesn't impact, you can spray it on your hand uh to kill, and it kills Corona or, based on the literature, it kills coronavirus, they added that, we've been using it previously, but um based on their updated information, it also kills the virus that causes COVID-19.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Emily?
Lisa had her hand up first.
Lisa?
At some point, are we going to discuss the remote aspect of return to school tonight?
What would you like to know?
Um, just we've been receiving a lot of emails from families that are concerned that the remote model um isn't equal to the hybrid model. Um, and I mean, it concerns me because, you know, as I was saying, no child left behind, and I feel like this population of kids is certainly being left behind from, from what, where things are at right now. So I was just wondering, you know, what can we do to try to make sure that this population of kids isn't left behind because they shouldn't be, um, it's almost like they're being reprimanded because they can't come to school. Well, not reprimanded, but you know, they're not getting the same level of education.
Yeah.
And I I think, you know, there is a chance that, you know, within a few months of being in school, we could eventually go remote.
That's true.
And we're all going to be there, so we don't want it to look quite like what it did last spring when we weren't prepared for that. So yeah, we'll start making it a more robust program now.
So I mean, I can recap all all of what we've covered the last few meetings as quickly with, you know, the first part is, if we go to a, if we go to a full remote model, the big changes we're going to have in a full remote model is, number one, I feel like attendance is mandatory, attendance is mandatory anyway. Number two, things are graded, there's assessments that have to be done, um, and it's a full day if it's, if we're in the full remote model. In the hybrid model, you don't have, so I'll I'll give you an example. If we say, I'll I'll pick a fifth grade, fifth grade class at a school. So I have a fifth grade class at school, we're in the hybrid model. Those fifth grade teachers are working with children in front of them. They they are not working with the other, the other cohort that's at home. At home, those fifth grade teachers on that one day have put together plans so that those children who chose for the full remote, and by the way, there are three options for the full remote, so I'm I'm talking about the hybrid full remote, which I think over 75% Mr. Conway, 75% of our families selected the the teacher remote part. Um, so they're planning for those children to make sure that they have the curriculum that they're going to be coming, covering face to face in school on those days. Um, so I I think what needs to be understood out in the community is, we are not in any position, no school district is, to go ahead and say, hey, you know what, for every single grade level, for every subject, single subject area, we're going to have an additional person who's going to go and work with you online. If that's what a parent wants, that that parent, I mean, they they have the option to come into the hybrid if they choose not to, we we certainly understand that. But they do have the Florida option, um, they also have the homeschool option if they want. Uh, but but there's nothing, and I know I've said this before, and I stand by this, you are not going to get it, me teaching um Ms. Trotta, if she was in my classroom and we're face to face, she is going to get far more from me than Mr. Conway, who's just remote. There there's no way around that. Face to face is always going to be uh more impactful than remote would be. What we do have set up and we're working on still because we were trying to work with our staff to see what we have, um, is have, again, the goal would be that those students who are fully remote, that a teacher checks in with them. But we can't have this expectation, it's going to be a fifth grade teacher that checks in with that fifth grade remote student on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, when the fifth grade teachers are doing full remote. It might be a second grade teacher that checks in and it's, it's, hey, how are you doing? What are you stuck with? Where are you? Um, and and that's, that's what it's going to be. It's not going to be, I'm going to sit with you all day for an hour and go over pieces. They might go and help them troubleshoot some of their items, um, but it's, it's not going to be something that's an hour, two hours at a time that they're going to be there um if they're fully remote. I think if that's a concern, uh, then then, you know, possibly doing the hybrid if they can, possibly doing the Florida model, those might be, those might be good options. But, you know, if if you are going to take the 50% and you're going to make it 100% remote, you'll hear from the teacher on Mondays, I think that's the goal, is for the teachers to reach out to all students, and some teachers may um decide to do, okay, we're bringing everybody for a morning meeting, just to check in, just to make sure everything's before everybody goes remote and the other students that are there in class. But that's going to be a teacher decision, that's not going to be something we're going to force because each teacher sets up their classroom differently. I don't know if I would do that in my biology classroom.
I, and I think I I can add some examples, so, because now that we get some of the survey results and we now know how, what the actual need is, um, you know, what 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 we're talking about is we're going to be able to assign staff members to support the students who are in full remote. And in assigning them there, you know, if if there are, we run eight third grade classrooms across the district in the three different towns. If there are 20 total third graders who are choosing to do full remote, most people's logical conclusions are, so run seven, and then you can have that one teacher do a full class of all the remote kids. And from a number point, that makes a lot of sense. But the reality is it's seven kids from one town, five from another, you know, and another five, six, seven from another. And and when you start to do that, you realize you don't have the economy of scale, you still need the eight teachers there. So we don't have the person to do that. We would have to hire 30 more.
That doesn't make sense to me, though. Like, it shouldn't matter what town the kids are from, they're remote. They're not, they're, they're just virtual through a computer.
But Mr. Conway was saying, you still need classrooms. Yeah, so if you take the fifth grade example and there were four teachers, if you take one teacher out that's going to do that remote, there's now a group of children who have nobody there with them.
Yeah, but what what Mr. Conway just said was that if we have eight classrooms across the district, all the same grade level, it doesn't matter what town they're from, they're all learning the same curriculum because we want them all to be equal. And if we have 20 kids in that grade level, regardless of what town they're from, go remote, then that means there's one teacher that we don't need that can match up with 20 students, if not correct.
Miss O'Connor, you, what I'm saying is, if those kids come from three different towns, we still need the eight people to run those eight classrooms because taking five kids from one classroom does not allow me to eliminate that classroom. If we had everyone in one building, if all third graders were literally in one building, we could consolidate like that. We could make use of staffing that way, and we could do that. That is not the setup we have. So we're really not able, able to do that. It's economy of scale, we don't benefit from it because we're spread out. So so what we are going to do, so what people can understand is, if, let's say, for instance, we have about 35 third and fourth graders who were doing full remote, we are going to have probably one staff member who would be assigned to those 35 students. That staff member is not planning the curriculum for them, they're not assessing them. But they're the ones who will be the regular daily contact for those students to help them with their learning. What we don't want to do is, we don't want to promise to people that they're going to get two hours a day of live instruction from that person, because I don't think that's that's realistic. But what will probably happen is, if they're doing their math work and they need support, that's the person that they can go to and that person can help them. That person may say, you know what, tomorrow at 9:00 AM, I'm going to get offered to all the third graders I'm I'm working with here, and we're going to do a math lesson on a similar topic. Uh, but all those kids are in eight different classrooms, or in third and fourth grades, so they're going to have, uh, it's a different type of teaching job. They're not planning the curriculum, they're supporting the students with their learning. The teach, the kids doing it will get some live support and live instruction, but it's going to be support based on what their their homeroom teacher has has prepared for them. Um, so they will be able to have live interaction with the teacher who will have, I want, I can't say it's a third grade teacher, but it will be someone who's licensed to that area and be able to support them with that. And that's what will happen, and they will have live instruction and support. And I would say, Mr. Conway, there's one one piece we got to make sure we add on. Right now, he's talking about elementary. Once you start getting to secondary, it is a whole different ballgame.
Yep.
Uh, so if you're not licensed in biology and all the biology teachers are in the classroom, you're going to have someone who's going to be coming up that might be, it's it's a check in. Uh, and and that is the reality of of what we have for options at our disposal.
Now, I know that there's been some concern raised by various parents in regards to the high school AP courses.
Yeah.
So what do, what can we do for those kids that are remote?
And we have some options for kids who are, who have already registered for AP courses, but they're going to be remote. There are options for them to take remote AP courses, some of those are offered through the uh Florida model. Uh, additionally, we, for students who really are sort of in a position where the Florida model doesn't have those, uh, they could continue to do the full remote with us and interact with their teacher. Um, or they could look at potentially talking to high school administration around a VHS model.
VHS is virtual high, virtual high school model.
And that could be a potential solution for the kids who are in those, those um AP classes that are sort of the singleton classes. Now, that is done virtually, but it's done by pay by seat uh for their, for a particular class, and there's more instruction that goes along with that.
And how does it work when it comes to grading? Because transcripts at that point are important, right?
Yeah, so anything, we take all the HHS grades and they go on our transcripts. Um, we will take all of Florida version, uh, Florida Virtual School, those will go on our transcripts. Uh, and anything that's part of the Penntucket model obviously is just graded by our own teachers.
Okay. And the same thing with the articulation agreements that we have with Nefo and Merrimack?
Uh, yeah, so if those classes double over for um, they they show up on our transcript, our students' record. Yep.
Okay. All right, now, what's up with the special ed department? I know I had asked that before, and I know this Dr. Jarvis was waiting to hear from the state, or is there a status update on that?
Could you be a little more?
Yeah, that's a big question.
Okay, so I know that, you know, the kids that are, you know, got robust IEPs, I guess, if you will, um, are going to be in in the hybrid model five days a week. But there's going to be a population of kids that have to go remote for medical. Um, so what's that going to look like? Like, how are you going to be able to implement an IEP and an agreed to service delivery grid for kids that are remote?
Yeah, and we're still waiting guidance from the state on exactly how they expect to do that. But in the end, we have to meet faith, uh, create appropriate public education for those students. So as they uh have services outlined within their IEP, we'd be seeking to meet those services. So we'll have some staff um who will be able to do that remotely. It may not look exactly like it does, particularly if it's B grid service. Obviously, you you can't really replicate B grid service, uh, but you can provide service to support their learning in their general ed classes that they have. Uh, and as far as related services, we continue to do that. Um, my understanding is the department plans to issue, I I don't know when, um, but plans to issue templates for learning plans which would outline what districts could work with families on specifically around those who are in remote learning and have chosen to do that, be it a health reason or whatever the reason is, uh, to outline what their services may look like because you you obviously you can't replicate the exact school day when they're in remote learning.
If I could just add on, I, you know, I've gotten some messages that say it's not fair that these children are able to go four or five days. I I just like to say, you know, we're talking about our high need special education groups who are in district program and our ELL students, our ELL students, they they don't speak English. Yeah, they need more time. Our students who are in our district programs need more, like, it's, 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 it's apples and oranges, and and they need that time. And I I think many of you know, uh, you've worked in education as students who are in those programs, it's critical. critically important that they are with us, that they are participating, they are engaging and they have someone that they're communicating with every single day in person. In situations when you're not, it becomes extremely challenging for everyone involved.
Emily.
I would really like to hear more about the remote aspect of the hybrid plan because that's what most of our students are going to be experiencing is the hybrid plan. And what they will be getting as part of that is in-person instruction on some days, which is great. But I feel like we haven't heard as much about the details of the days when they are hybrid, sorry, when they are remote within that model. So if they're, you know, everyone's remote on Monday beyond the office hours that that teacher is offering and maybe the morning meeting, what else is their day going to consist of? What is it going to look like? And likewise, on their other two remote days, what, because what's that going to look like in terms of how much contact and synchronous or is asynchronous instruction?
Sure. Got any answer? Okay. And we're still, you know, we're working with our Kentucky Association of Teachers to make sure that, you know, they're in full understanding of this. But generally, and we did this in our PD, so we modeled a little bit in our PD what we would want for the administrators. We did professional development the last two days for the administrators. We modeled what we would want the teachers to think about. And I told the administrators, this is how you plan a lesson, thinking that people who are remote can go through all of this without doing it in person. And then I adjust some of it because I have people in front of me. So the example is we used Pairdeck and we're going to, we actually prepaid for a NearPod subscription, basically the same same concept, and it's Google Slides, but you make it interactive and there are components that get added in. And that's going to be one of the expectations, particularly from like grades three and on up, that we're using something like a NearPod. And your point is just how you use Google Slides, for instance, it's an example. And our platforms are CSO at K to two and pre-K to two and then Google Classroom from there on in. Those are the primary platforms that students would be going to. And if you were a teacher and I was preparing to teach on Tuesday and I was teaching a concept, I would want to prepare my lesson for the kids who are at home first. I want to think about how do I want to make sure the kids are at home, get access to this content? So it might be a video that I want them to watch. I might record myself for, you know, five minute screencast or something to that effect. And I'm going to put that there for them. And then in Google Classroom, I'm going to have the work that I want them to proceed through. When I go in to teach the class, I'm going to start again with a clear objective so everyone knows the same objective that the kids have there. A lot of the kids might, we might be doing Google Classroom, maybe on all of our individual devices in the classroom, or it might just be up on this tablet. And I'm going to show them that. And maybe instead of doing the video, I might actually present and do something on the whiteboard and we might have more interaction. Clearly, that's going to be better to be in person, but it does match the objectives. So it's all about objective-based teaching. What's your objective? What do you want as outcome at the end? And that's what we really expect. So then when you do that and then you come in the next day, you know that the kids who come in on Wednesday learn the same thing. And you're going to want to do a check with them in the morning or in the first period of the first section of the class to make sure they understood. But at the same time, in Google Classroom or CSO, those students who are at home the day before are expected to submit work, submit answers to questions or drawings, whatever it is, whatever grade level or subject matter it is. And you, as a teacher, have an opportunity to see that before they come in. So you already know whether they took away what you wanted to and you can correct some of those things right away. You're going to have, so an elementary classroom might have seven, eight, nine kids in it and then you'll have another seven or eight kids at home. So it's the same amount of grading and you're just, you have the kids in front of you and you have the kids who are at home who are submitting work.
And I'll just add on that I think it's really important to understand everybody who's watching, you know, we use Pairdeck, we talk about NearPod. If I was a, I'll stick with the fifth grade, if I'm a fifth grade teacher, I might have no clue what Mr. Conway was just talking about, right? Because I've been out, I mean, that's not what we did in the spring. So when I come back, that's why those days are so critically important, right? Those first couple of days, it's about protocol, safety, getting on. But then it's all about how do you use these pieces in order to plan for that remote piece? We know that's really important. We know that, like I said before, we can't be in a situation where what you did on Tuesday is a repeat of what you did on Wednesday. So the students who, like I think what Mr. Conway said was a great example, what you present, when you present for remote, having that at the forefront and then making sure you go over that with your students in face to face so that when Tuesday happens, so when the next day happens, everyone's on the same page with the content and the skill. It's just that the remote people have not had that face-to-face interaction, but they will the following day. We cannot get in a situation where we're only covering half of the curriculum. But those 11 days are so important. And when we look at the professional development that we've set up, we'd say about 70% of it.
Yeah, so about 30% of it is going to be us giving them really direct PD around some of these tools.
Including bringing in people who know how to use them, use them in other places.
Test practices around remote and blended learning. And then 70% of the time is going to be teacher time to now use those tools, start to plan and prepare, on top of, you know, thinking about the physical arrangement of your room as well. But those are the types of things that we're going to be doing. I'll add this too, especially for our K to eight families. One thing we did invest in as well is InSync, not the band, sorry to disappoint anyone. But InSync is the virtual platform that's related to Eureka Math. So what it does is it takes all of the paper and it puts it into fillable PDFs and it attaches actual instructional lesson videos from actual Eureka teachers. So not only can our teachers use it remotely, they can use it with the kids in the room. So when kids are at home, they have access to that. And it's certainly a step up. We were using the Khan Academy videos that were connected to Eureka. This is done by Eureka. And then it's the actual fillable PDFs to work through it that can get submitted in Google Classroom. And even better news, campus, Infinite Campus released what was in beta for a year to integrate Google Classroom into Infinite Campus, just in time.
And one final thought on the remote piece of it. You know, teachers were very, what can I do to help? What can I do to help? And I remember it was sometime in July, I sent out an email to all the teachers and I said, listen, what you can do if you really want to know what to prepare for the upcoming year, just prepare to get your curriculum up online and think about what is the best way that I can evaluate remotely? What is the best way I can deliver remotely? Do I record videos? Like, that was the task. If someone asked me today, if a teacher came to me and said, what can I do to get ready? It's going to be the same thing. What can you do to get your curriculum up remotely and be effective? And that's, again, for people who aren't tech savvy, who haven't gone through this, that's why it's so critically important that the commissioner gave those additional 10 days because most of, the overwhelming majority of time is going to be spent on those tools for them to become familiar with. And so it's not a surprise to hear, I mean, certainly not from parents because you had the spring experience, but also from teachers to say, I don't know how to do this, this isn't going to be possible. Yeah, because you don't know, we've not gone through and shown you and you, we haven't given you the time, like, you've not sat down with them.
I can say, we did, we sent out a lot of links and opportunities for people. And a large number of our staff involved in this. And they participated and, you know, our administrative team, for a lot of them using or seeing Pairdeck and seeing, and I'd say I probably did it at a novice heading towards moderate level. And, you know, I've only been using it for a month, you know? So, and I often say this about technology and technology, I've said it as a building principal and I say it as a assistant superintendent, I'll learn about something and see how this can be used. I'll learn it enough to introduce it to everyone. And while I introduce it, I am the foremost expert in the room and in the entire district of how to do it. And then 48 hours later, I'm the least knowledgeable person of how to do it. And that's what will happen.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, didn't see you.
Okay, one last question I had is if things do change with current numbers in the towns, how quickly can we go from hybrid to remote?
Yeah, so overall, the plan here would be, we have banked three professional days still. So.
contractual professional days.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Contract, so 184 days of what the teachers have, effectively have, they've got the 10 days. So we have three days still in our pockets. If we, if we run into that situation, we'll see where we are. But I think at that point, it would be, it could be, as I said, similar to what happened in the spring. We might say, hey, we're at a point now, we're going to have to hold up. Tomorrow, we're going to go start full remote, but we're going to have it as a teacher PD day. And if we need a second one, we can put a second one and then the following day we'll go full remote. In that context, I do have the ability to make that decision and then inform the school committee who can later endorse that decision or say go back the other way. But I would want you to know before I go ahead and do that, and the reasons why, but we can, I mean, if that happened right now, if there was a report coming forward in right now, we go to help, I'd perform a call out to all families shortly after saying, here's what we're going to do. So it's day to day.
So if we did go remote, you know, for whatever reasons, some parents that work full time would have to scramble to find someone to take care of their child on the days that the child was in school. You know, like, if my child was doing, you know, the cohort of Tuesday, Thursday, and I worked on Tuesday, Thursdays and all of a sudden I were remote, my child's home Tuesdays and Thursdays and there's no adult here, I'd have to scramble to find somebody.
Yeah.
That's going to be hard. I think it might be hard for people.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it was in the spring as well. It's, and again, we don't have the ability to control that virus. I think you're asking like a rhetorical, there's no response I can give this, oh yeah, here's the plan, look how we cover this. Because if we're, if we're saying we're going fully remote, it's not going to be a safe environment for children to come back in. And that's one of the primary reasons when we look at the before and after school program, why we're not running that because we need the parents to get our feet under us to make sure we understand how this is going to work in person when we start off with the 25% on September 8th.
No, it, the teacher had spoke earlier, Liz had spoken earlier about, you know, teacher walkthroughs prior to the opening of school. I mean, are they going to have a chance to do that so they can maybe mentally prepare for their classrooms or?
The teachers have been coming in and out of the buildings. As you may, I don't know.
Okay. I think Bill had a question after me.
Go ahead, Bill.
Just an observation, are we going back to Zoom for the next meeting? Because I missed probably about a third of this one and I thought this was a little more cumbersome than Zoom. I don't know what the other members think, but I think that if we start switching to another format, maybe there would be a way to get everybody together a little earlier. So if there are problems, we solve them with those people that are having trouble getting there, getting online.
Yeah, we can talk about it. It's, so this format prevents all the echoing that you were hearing. If we go back to Zoom, we were able to do it when we were not together, to be able to post a video when we were not together. As soon as we came together, it brought too many, so like Dean is taking the comments on Zoom. So as soon as the comments are on Zoom, they, there's another computer that's streaming this and those two computers are coming into conflict with each other. That's why you have that feedback. So, I mean, we'll, we can continue to troubleshoot it, I think. I mean, I'm impressed everybody's in right now, telling the truth.
I can't see everybody, though.
Yeah, well, all you can see, right? So I guess if I went like this, you could see a little bit better of everybody here, right?
No, just the school, just you and Mary Ann and.
Yeah, you can't see Brett, yeah. We need, we're.
I can't see Mary Ann either. I can see Greg.
I can't see Mary Ann either, and I can't see whoever's behind Dina. Oh, yeah, that is who that is. Hi.
Somebody in the back row, it might be Greg, I'm not even sure who's in the back row, or it could be Dick. I don't know.
I think it's Dick.
Looks like six mannerisms.
Okay, we need to continue with the agenda. Everyone.
One quick question.
Chris, you have a question?
So, question, on those things that are really, really hot, what's going to happen?
So, yeah, that's, if you were with us during the walk, some of the walkthroughs last week, it was somewhat stifling in some of the buildings. So you can open up those, but yeah, on warm days, and we're, I think somewhat fortunate, that September 14th is when we would start the first day of school. But on that, on those days, it will be a weather day. And it'll, we'll call it a weather day, just like you call it a snow day. It would, we try to do our best to look out ahead of time and say, look, tomorrow's going to be too warm, we're just going to be full remote. And at that point, teachers will be able to hop on and just do full remote for that day. And there's, and they would follow the schedule. So if you're a high school student, if you're a high school teacher, you just follow your
Emily.
And at that point, are you still expecting the teachers to be teaching that remote from their cla, sorry, from their classroom or from wherever they can manage? And the reason I'm asking this is not just because obviously if the classrooms are too hot for the kids, they're probably too hot for the teachers, but that the technology organization around teaching live remotely in your classroom is not necessarily the same as like teaching Zoom on, or teaching on Zoom on your laptop.
So I think it depends, like what you just said, we've seen this in all over the place, right? So you might have a situation where your child goes to hop on and the teacher that's there is there, then it's reading in and out or it freezes. So that really depends. It might be, that might be a day where you say, hey, I mean, the teacher knows their classrooms too, right? So they, they understand, okay, I'm fine. Like, sun doesn't come in my side of the room, I'm good. I can come in and I can do it there. I think that that one, it really depends on the situation that they have in their classrooms. And a lot of teachers, even when the spring, it was, that was a mandated stay-at-home board, right? So we did not have the ability to come into the buildings. But teacher, we had a lot of teachers who wanted to come in to their buildings, get materials so they could use those materials. Those teachers, if they wanted, they can come in and they could just be right in their classrooms.
For sure. I just know that the setup where like a lot of them have their computers is not necessarily near their board where they might be teaching, which could cause a complication in terms of seeing their kids and what they're presenting. So as long as the teachers have the flexibility to do what works best.
Yeah, they may, they may have that flexibility. I think it's, they all have Chromebooks as well, so they should be able to move around wherever they need to do what they got to do. But you're right, in the, in the elementary classrooms, they had, I don't know what they are, like desktops from the 1980s that they have there with a monitor and that is stationary in that space. So they all have Chromebooks, should be able to move around.
True, but just again, I mean, you know what, I don't, it's good. Detail, sorry.
Yeah, it's going to depend there. I understand.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Okay. Next up, we have policies. And so the Pennsylt Regional School District had to, we had to adopt these COVID-19 policies recommended by the Massachusetts School Committee, our Massachusetts Authority on School Committees, our association. And these all came right from them, pretty much. But I'm just going to read you, we've developed a new section for our policies, which is section M. And I'm just going to read you what that means. The school committee takes note of the COVID-19 emergency resulting disruption of the traditional school day and year, growing concerns of students, families in the community, and the growing number of issues that will affect public education. Therefore, the PRSD School Committee establishes an emergency interim policy, Section M, to promote public safety and safety of students and faculty, maintain to the extent up while the high and efficient level of educational services, ensure support for students in general, and in particular for those at highest risk educationally, as well as those at social and economic risk, and comply with the emergency orders of the governor, and adhere to the extent possible to the guidance of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and other agencies of state and federal government, and expedite the safest strategy for returning students to school. The school committee will approve the final plan submitted to DESI, which will outline its strategy for returning students to school, and will, in collaboration with the superintendent, make such modifications to the back-to-school plan and district policy, and will authorize the superintendent to suspend, revise, or create protocols to facilitate the safe return to school. The superintendent will designate the appropriate staff members to be responsible for administration of COVID-19-related policies during the period of the pandemic emergency, and shall make sure, make such recommendations to the school committee as needed. The school committee will authorize the superintendent to act expeditiously in executing the back-to-school plan in accordance with current law and regulation, and will, where noted, authorize the superintendent to suspend, revise, or recommend policies, rules, and protocols as needed to serve the best interests and safety of students, their families, and the community. The back-to-school plan shall constitute the policy of the school district during the pandemic emergency, and the superintendent shall exercise the authority provided in law to carry out the plan as needed." Oh, and Marie, would you like to talk on these?
Yes, please. So these are, this was the guidance we were given by Mass. In addition, we've been talking to other school committee, other districts. Before Mass came out, and before the state gave us, you know, the guidance for these, we had already started talking about a mask policy, a mask is in facial masks, not, I mean, a C mask policy, and what would be needed for that. So when you hear Policy M, so our policies go A through L. So Dr. Bartholomew, Mr. Hodges, and myself were at the school committee and decided to, the best way to condense all these policies, because there'll be several more, is to add this new Section M that people can go to in the interim. So if you're looking for a homeschooling policy, you might find it under, in general, our Section I for instruction. But there's gonna be criteria that Dr. Bartholomew has to follow based on state law, I'm not offering now, based on that homeschooling. In addition, I think one of them was school attendant, I'm sorry, school attendants is gonna be addressed. And Dr. Bartholomew, I think it was, we gave this scenario, there's a policy that it would improve the district, and that numbers were already at capacity for hybrid. At one school, you have the authority to maybe face that student, even if they were enrolled. So there's some leeway there that we need to have for the emergency situation. The mask policy is, the M A S K mask policy, is the regulation and protocols that we'd like to get out to the parents as soon as possible, families, students, administrators. It details what type of mask is gonna be allowed, when you're gonna wear the mask, when and who authorizes a mask break, what happens if you forget your mask, what happens if you violate this policy, and then the signage and resources that came together. This was definitely a collaboration between the Policies Subcommittee, the Mask Guidance, what's best for PRSD. It's kind of all included in this policy. So I don't know if you wanna read that, Dina, because people might hear you better. Or do you want me to read it?
Read the whole, M policy?
Mask.
The mask policy.
The mask policy.
Okay.
I mean, you don't have to read all the, on the second page, it's mostly like legal references and preferences.
Right.
But I hope, I'm hoping, so generally, when we do policy, we do look at a few at a time, right, each meeting? And then when all of the sections done, like we just completed Section I. Ms. Knapper and myself worked together to get it, Stephen, to get them on the website and get it into the handbooks, get it into the, you know, administrator's hands. We're not gonna follow that same protocol this time because it's as needed. So this should show up, I would think, on the website sooner than later, so families have it, correct? I think that's what we decided, yeah.
Would it also be something we could just send out via email?
Yeah.
Matt, Matt, sure. Do we make these approvals based on each individual Section M? Or can we be all inclusive and make a motion to accept Section M in its entirety?
Well, tonight, we're just doing the mask policies in the section. The.
In that row.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the adoption of the new section, yes. And then the mask policy.
Okay, so, would you guys like me to read the policy out?
All right.
Okay, we'll send it out.
As long as we send it out, it should be good.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion to approve the inclusion of Section M?
I believe so.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the addition of Section M to our policy manual?
Second.
Roll call vote? Or is there any discussion? Roll call vote, Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Dina, yes. So now, can I have a motion to accept Policy M?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion yet?
So, the fourth paragraph after the bullets states, so, I don't know, the fourth or the ninth, kind of the third row, third, fourth row line down. It says, unless student or staff member meets the requirements for such as stated above. But I don't see where above it has, why people wouldn't have them be wearing. I think it's actually below, so I think.
Okay, so below.
We must have tinkered with.
We did, we might, yes. So just change above to below, and that's fine?
Oh, assuming it is below.
Yes, it does, it says.
Exceptions.
The next one, exceptions to this policy.
Meets the exceptions.
Exceptions stated below. That was all.
Okay.
And it is below.
Now, do we need to make a motion to accept Policy M as amended? Oh, sorry, Emily?
I have a question that is actually about the policy itself. So the piece around face coverings can be disposable or reusable, will need to cover them out the nose, be made up to at least two layers, fit snugly, blah, 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 have the ear loops. And then the next paragraph has the piece around no neck gaiters, bandanas, et cetera. What about the masks that are technically a neck gaiter in that they go around your neck, but also have all of the bullet points in that paragraph above? I.
Is it a neck gaiter, or?
But a neck gaiter wouldn't have the ties around the ears.
I think.
So.
From the standpoint of, if I'm an administrator in a building, and I'm trying to see if people have proper masks.
Right? So, like, this goes around the ears, but also is tech, like it's based on a neck gaiter style, but, and this one doesn't have it, but I have ones also that have like that second layer, and, you know, a filter pocket. And for some children who are smaller and have a hard time having masks fit them, this style is more comfortable. And where it meets the safety protocols in terms of the layers of cloth or material and the fitting around the face and the, you know, nose wire, et cetera, I would hate to see kids being told that they can't wear something that is actually not the unsafe, or in terms of like the research that was done that's showing neck gaiters, like the single layer can actually propel more droplets, those ones. So I just, that part makes me hesitate.
So, can you hold up that neck gaiter again, please? So I think, and I think the concern is, and would you be so kind as to put it on again? Sorry, for my.
It's just hard with the earbuds in, hold on.
Sorry. Well, so if I'm an administrator and I'm walking down, or if I'm a teacher, and this is what I see, I have no way of knowing if that's single or double. I think that's the.
Correct.
I think.
I know.
What you just said, and I think this is the part where we start getting into, if you're in one of the programs, there's a, there's a serious issue. And for that child, that child that works it out, the teacher works it out. If the parent sent it in advance, and the administrator said, you know what, this is, this does meet those requirements, I think that'd be fine. But I do think if you start having barrage of middle school and high school students coming in and saying, oh, no, this is good, we put people in a really bad situation to be able to identify what is a mask. Is it a double layer or is it a single layer? There's no, there's no way to know unless you get off the first, or you may not want to.
Right, so I guess, I feel apprehensive about saying no neck gaiter style masks, because there are neck gaiter style masks that are safe. And I think that in order for kids to wear new masks properly, the best thing we can do is get them a mask that's comfortable and fits them well. So if you're saying, in order to have this kind of mask, like a parent needs to notify their teacher ahead of time or whatever, that's fine. I just, I worry about asking teachers and administrators to be the mask police when there are things that are safe, you know?
So under that policy underneath that, where it talks about exceptions, the school nurse, the local border health issue, so it talks about principal and consultation with the superintendent. So they, we do have that flexibility. If that building administrator works something out. But again, I think at the beginning in particular, I think it'd be important if a parent plans on providing something like that, that they first get that looked at by the administrator, or by the teacher, or by the school nurse, and that is made aware, the teachers aware, and administrations aware that that was approved.
Okay, because I just, I don't think it has to be, I don't think all kids who have different style masks are doing that because it's a medical necessity? More because their parents want them to keep it on, and therefore, they tried to find the most comfortable thing for them.
And it also says in the policy, it says, face shields or physical barriers will be considered only on a case-by-case basis. So they could, you know, address it with your teacher or your administration beforehand.
Yes, Chris. So I'm wondering, with what Emily said, if we say, hey, some guys from health have these neck gaiters, parentheses, that do not comply with all of the bullets above. So that would let the loosees that have the ear, that have the layer snugly, I don't know.
No, I think that's a good way to do it.
And they can be as loose as they wanna be on the neck.
Well, it would still.
I would just go for the exception. It's, I understand, I think it's a, that's a great point in the middle to say, look, yeah, that takes care of that issue, it's just, I think about trying to enforce that, it'd be really hard. But I think, so I, and we could easily send something out. When this policy goes out, we can say, look, if this is exactly what Emily said, if this is your situation, please make sure that you get that to the school nurse administrator ahead of time. And for people watching, please don't do that tomorrow. Like, wait until we get to, especially those 25% days. That is a great day to bring something in, or you have a question for someone to look at.
Absolutely. I just wanna make sure we're being as accessible as possible for the smallest kids who are likely to struggle to find masks or have them homemade, because finding masks for small-sized people, it turns out, is not as easy as one would imagine.
Okay, anyone else have anything to add? Okay, so if there are no more comments, we're going to vote. We don't need to make another motion. But vote to approve Policy M with the, just the word of motion to vote. Roll call vote, Wayne? Yes, Joanna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dina, yes. Policy M passes. We go on to Policy ACAB, harassment.
Madam there, Madam Chair, I apologize for interrupting. I'm down to 1% power, so I'm about to drop out. It's not an illness, it's not a hangover, it's just, I forgot to charge the iPad before we started. So I will regretfully be signing off now.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve ACAB?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Do we actually send this up?
So, so this, Policy ACAB, and the next one, ACABR, which is the procedures that attach to it, are all, are slightly revised to reflect federal changes from the Office of Civil Rights. So this, upon approval tonight, will go into all of our handbooks. Will get posted online, all parents get it. And actually, this was the training that we did today that went a lot longer than I thought it would. But all administrators trained in how to use these procedures and process and understand the changes in the laws.
And then, I think it's, where it's, I believe it in yellow?
That is a change, I think.
On the last, I think, is that the name and phone number of the, like, do we actually have to input that into the policy?
So when it gets put into the handbook, so the policy, I don't know that school committee policy requires it, but the handbook would. Your policy just needs to indicate that there is a title coordinator, the handbook, which is the public disperser. I am currently both the Title IX Coordinator and the Civil Rights.
So it's appropriate not to have those, your name in the policy?
And then, sometimes I wonder if it is appropriate to put an individual's name in a policy, right? Because I think, if that, not me, per se, but.
But the title, it's an assistant superintendent.
So I think what you would say, Title IX Coordinator is what it is. And, because that Title IX Coordinator may not always be the Assistant Superintendent.
But where it says, list the name and phone number of the district's Title IX Coordinator, I think that, I think that's just odd.
It's in the handbooks, it will include, it'll be the current one, because the handbooks change every year.
But I'm wondering if.
You certainly can put it in, I just.
Well, not put it in, but then just have those lines.
Or we could say differently, district's Title IX Coordinator can give, for now, Mr. Conway is.
I have another idea to do that, I think just in those places, just say, refer to individuals' school handbooks for the district. Like, to me, it's like something that M A S C gave us, and then we didn't input.
So our attorneys gave this to us, actually.
But I'm thinking that part was given to be filled in.
Definitely filled in in the handbooks. Whether or not you choose to do it, I mean, certainly it can be filled in, it can be part of what you approve tonight. See that.
I just think it's weird to have a, essentially a blank.
It would be my recommendation then, not to delete it, but to rather, if you're uncomfortable with it, then you can actually fill it in and approve it with the names. And the policy is, in the handbook, it states the name and the phone number right there.
Yeah, I wouldn't delete it, but I think it's odd. I don't know, I don't know what you wanna do. I'm not, probably hung up, but just to me, look like, oh, this is something I gotta fill out.
So do we want to make a motion to approve it with the Title IX information filled out? So we have, we have a motion.
That's right, we have to take care of the first motion.
Okay. We, you could, well, do we wanna.
You can vote the motion as amended.
Okay, do we wanna amend it and then vote the motion as amended? Okay. So we have to vote on the amendment? Or vote as amended?
No, you can just vote it as amended.
Okay. So we're gonna add Brent, correct, to the list of, and your phone number?
The office phone number, yes.
Yep. Your private line.
No, no cell tonight.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna vote with, on Policy ACAB with the amendment of adding the contact information. Roll call vote, Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Bill? Oh, sorry, Emily? Marie?
Yes.
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dina, yes.
So Dina, Policy ACABR would also need the same amendment in the first, like, A.
Okay.
Motion to accept ACABR with the, um, Assistant Superintendent's name and contact information, as, as we did in the last one?
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Bill? Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dina, yes. Okay. Ooh, that was the end.
Motion to adjourn into executive session?
Second.
Yes. Yep, uh, we are entering into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and we will not be, we will not be coming back. Thank you very much.
For the public and for school governors, you guys, just stay on, you're fine. I'm gonna end the recording here.
Don't we need to vote?
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you, Ms. Wired, thank you.
Sorry.
Roll call vote, Wayne?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dina, yes.
Okay, give me one second.
Thank you.